ER recording.
Christina, do you know if anybody wasn't going to be present?
No, I haven't heard from anyone. Hi Curtis.
Bye all.
So we're waiting on Steve and Ursula. Here's Steve.
We touch base with Ursula. She's on her way.
Great. Would you like me to start the? Go ahead and call the meeting to order and start the niceties? But we can hold off on anything important till Ursula arrives?
Absolutely.
All right, so I'm gonna call this meeting of the Mount Greylock Regional School District's school to make school committee to order on Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six oh one P M. This meeting is taking place virtually pursuant to the law supply signed by Governor Healy on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, which extends the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law. The language does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. This meeting will be livestreamed on willianet.org and broadcast live on Spectrum Cable TV, channel thirteen oh three in Williamstown. Meetings will be available as video on demand within twenty-four hours after the meeting on MG RSD YouTube channel, and it's specified within the agenda, the URL for that YouTube channel, as well as on willianet.org. So with that done, we'll do a roll call to begin the meeting.
Bowen here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfin Byrne here.
Green here.
Miller here.
And Ursula, you arrived just in time to say Malloy here. But we can't hear you quite yet.
Okay, now, now you're good. Sorry, Zoom had to update and it was a computer thing.
Yes.
We're good.
All right. So I'll read the mission statement, mission at Mount Greylock, Mount, at Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. The next item on the agenda is student update. I do not see either of our student council representatives on yet, so we can return to them if they do arrive. And the item after that is the M A S C presentation of the Division Six All-State School Committee two thousand and twenty-four award.
So I can, I can do that. Yeah, so on behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, I would like to present the all-state or an all-state school committee award to Christina Conry. Christina has provided steady leadership to the Mount Greylock Regional School Committee for over four years, not just through the challenges of COVID, but also through the transition of two different superintendents. She has calmly and ably partnered with each superintendent to ensure that the committee could be effective and efficient while tending to challenges such as limited budgets, a controversial track and field project, and multiple contract negotiations with each bargaining unit. Due to her leadership and despite tensions that have arisen in schools across the Commonwealth and the country, the Mount Greylock Regional School Committee continues to work cooperatively and cohesively to provide the appropriate oversight and support to its district. So thank you, Christina, on behalf of the M A S C.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is my favorite because it's the last for me. Reorganization of the school committee. We're going to do this, this process of electing a new school committee chair. I'm going to follow policy B D A exactly, word by word, and what it requests that I do is it first, it first asks for a roll call where each member will announce the name of the candidate of their choice. And at the end of that ballot process, I will ask if any member wishes to change their ballot vote. I will then declare the ballot closed and announce the vote. So what I'm going to do is call on each of you in alphabetical order, if I can. You will indicate the name of the person that you would like to be the next chair of the school committee. And at the end of that process, if we have a majority, that person will be the new chair of the school committee. If we do not have a majority, then we will move to have somebody make a motion presumably within that group of people that will be then be voted by a majority vote, either up or down as we move through the people who are nominated.
Point of order, Joe?
Yes.
If I'm using that term correctly. Step one says nominations for the office of chair will first be made from the floor, and then we do that process where we name who it is that we would vote for.
Yeah, so I think we, if we have multiple names, then we go through that process. If we have one name from the floor, then we don't need it.
So why don't I ask for nominations from the floor?
Can I make a nomination?
Yes.
Julia Bowen. I would like to nominate Julia Bowen as chair.
I will second that nomination.
And if I may, Julia and Jose and Ursula have just been reelected to serve their next four years. They've all been on the committee now for four years. Julia has shown just great empathy for everyone and solid listening and communication skills, and I really think she would be an excellent chair to our committee.
Are there any other nominations? With dramatic pause, I hear no others, and therefore I would like to have a roll call vote for that nomination.
Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine gratefully, thankfully. Aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye, no backsees.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye. Can I say something very briefly? Sure. On be, on be, I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of the committee. I just want to thank Christina for her excellent stewardship over the years and to just remind the people at home that you know, the tradition of the committee has been to rotate to cheer, especially between towns, but you know, with all that was going on, it was very nice that Christina stepped up for so long and you know, greatly appreciated everything you have done.
Thank you.
And I believe that means that Julia, we turn it over to you. Congratulations and thank you in advance.
And bear with me, please. I thank you, I just want to echo what Steve said, thank you so much to Christina. Those are huge shoes to fill. And I ask you all in advance to bear with me as I try to step into those shoes. I want to continue down the reorganization of the school committee, but I also note that Liz LaFond has joined us from M A S C. And Liz, if it's, if it's all right with the committee, I would just like to help Liz see where we are on the agenda, and if she wants to add anything, back to the previous agenda item.
So Liz, I already presented because I wasn't sure if you were joining, I'm sorry, but do you want to add anything? I read the statement that we had supplied to Glenn, but is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Perhaps not. Liz, are you there? Okay, so let's, let's move on and.
I'm sorry. I'm here, I apologize.
Liz, we know. Yes, we can, and did you hear Carrie?
I did, yes, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having internet issues, which seems strange to even say in this day and age, but I know if anybody could understand that, it's folks out in Berkshire County, so I apologize, but it was a little bit beyond my control. Thank you, Carrie, for reading that statement. I just, I guess I would like to add, if I could, that during the years that I've had the pleasure and honor really of working with Carrie, Carrie.
Christina.
Yep.
Christina, I do mean Christina, as, as chair of the Mount Greylock School Committee, during some pretty stressful times, she really was always just the epitome of calm and thought.
Oh, no.
Oh, poor Liz.
Poor, yes. Liz, are you there?
I am, it's my internet, I apologize. Okay. I'm here, you guys go ahead with your meeting. Thank you so much, Christina, for everything you've done.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, so now, sorry, let's go back to the reorganization of the school committee, and I will look for a motion to nominate a vice chair.
I would like to nominate Christina Conry as vice chair.
Thank you, Carrie, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Curtis. Any discussion?
And just put discussion item, you know, again, for the people at home, it's been our tradition to have the chair and vice chair from different towns.
And, and I will personally say, I will, at stepping into this, having not been the vice chair, I will deeply appreciate Christina's engagement as vice chair and learning from her in that process, so. Thank you. I, we need to vote on that, so roll call vote. Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Thank you, that passes. And now I will look for nominations for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Steve.
I will second that.
I guess I probably should be following B D A, but I'm also only hearing one nomination. So if I'm not hearing any other nominations, then let's, we need a motion, I guess, to nominate, sorry, a motion for Steve to be the chair or the secretary.
Secretary, secretary, secretary.
So moved from Ursula, is second from Carrie?
Yep.
Okay, and a roll call vote, Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Great, that motion passes. And as the agenda notes, subcommittees will be determined in December, so we'll come back to, to changes in subcommittees. I will now look for a motion to appoint Joe Bergeron as the district secretary.
Miller, so move.
Second. Thank you, thank you. Motion by Steve, second by Carrie, and any discussion? Hearing none, I, let's move to a roll call vote, Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Great, that motion passes. Moving us to public comment. I do not see anyone from the public.
And I did not receive any.
Thank you. Okay.
As the former chair.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move to the approval of the minutes from October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Miller, so move to make it easier for the transcript.
As, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Carrie, any discussion about those minutes? Hearing none, I will move to a roll call vote, Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Excellent. These meetings will go fast, this is good. Let's move to the principals and directors report, and I believe we have Nolan on for a school year update.
Good evening, everyone. Joe said two to three minutes, which is really hard to parse down the first fifty-one days to two to three minutes. So I'll hit you with some just cool, cool things. One thing we brought back this year, which we haven't done since before the pandemic, is we have our grade six leading groups. And what that means is they meet with Ms. Renzi and Ms. Vile, and they prepare presentations and to the students five through K two five. So the first one was in the middle of September, they broke out into groups and they talked about what it means to be a Wyver, Wyburn, which is our mascot, and kind of like what Lanesboro is all about, our cool, our culture and who we are as a school. And then in mid-October, they rolled out our Positive Behavior Interventions and Support System, which is getting a blue ticket. So they went, students went to nine different stations, each led by a different sixth-grade group, and they learned like ways that they could earn a ticket, and then all ways that it's reinforced. They come to the main office, they tell Mr. G how they earned a ticket, they get a sticker, homerooms at the end of the week, they have the most tickets, get a picture, and the Wyburn weekly, end of the month, get an extra fifteen minutes recess, and potentially, if they have the most at the end of the trimester, maybe a game of basketball or something with a teacher or a principal. So that's the first cool thing. Second, cool piece of data, Roblinoff helped me with this yesterday. Year-to-date, well, this time last school year, we had six hundred thirty-five absences already. This year, we only have five hundred and six, which is a significant decrease, and I think we've had more days of school than last year, it's got to be pretty close. So that's, that's a great step in the right direction of what we're doing. And then lastly, a new thing that we're doing, some teachers are taking on, is we're having like these pre-K and younger family nights. So Ms. Chris, our pre-K teacher, Mrs. Vile, our school psych, our sharing coordinator OT, and Cindy Gingras, our speech and language, speech and language pathologist, put the, put together these after-school events for young families. They come in, they do, they work on social emotional skills, they work on OT, they work on all these cool things to help build our pipeline into our pre-K and our, our school. And then lastly, book club is starting on Monday, our book, first book this year is This Is My World by the Lonely Planet Cooperative. Eighty-four different kids from around the world talk about their homeland and their culture, so I'm looking forward to that starting on Monday. But I think that was about two to three minutes. I could go on, I have a whole list, I just picked the ones I liked, or the ones that I think the ones that you would like.
Thanks.
Ursula, I see your hand is up.
Yeah. Sorry, I have a question. The absence data, that's awesome, I was wondering if you have any notional idea of why that might be, or is it just coincidence, like, have you done something different, or people are just sick?
I think there's, there's two pieces that I think are at play here. One is we were adamant about people being at school. I think Nurse Larson and I have been on the same page about making sure when kids are out, they're like, hey, we know that you're out, what's going on, how do we get you back? And the second is the general, I don't want to speak for everyone, but the fear of being a contagious person has also diminished a little bit, not, not completely gone, there are still some families who are like, I'm freaked out, my kid's gonna get other people sick. But I think that's just the way of the world, getting sick at, in elementary, like the first two weeks of elementary school is like a rite of passage.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, have a great evening.
Thank you, Nolan. All right, let's go over to you, Jose, for the Policy and Governance Subcommittee report.
Yes, thank you, Julia, we will, we will miss you. Whoever's gonna be on this subcommittee will certainly miss you. But I can dive into this action item, which is policy B E D H, public comment. We heard Curtis read this as a discussion item. This was moved unanimously by the Policy and Governance Subcommittee to the floor of the full committee. Would anyone like to, to second our motion? Harry's seconds. Thank you, Carrie, any discussion of the policy that we have before us? They always say wait thirty seconds, and someone was just bound to, to speak up, but I think we're pretty close. On that note, we'll, we'll call vote to, vote on this, on this motion.
Bowen, aye.
I think with you.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Motion passes. Up next, we've got this action item, we're rescinding policies B E D H hyphen E, B E D H hyphen R. Excuse that, sound of beep sits behind me. This, I can't recall, Julia, as our note taker, I, I think we also, actually, can you, can you remind us where we sat as a subcommittee, if this was something that we moved to the floor of the committee, rescinding these two policies?
I believe they are embedded in the new B E D H, and I'm seeing a nodding head from Curtis, and so they are redundant or potent, potentially contradictory, but they, the H now takes over.
Okay. I think because they're scheduled that, we still vote, and maybe to be safe, I'll welcome a motion to rescind these two policies.
So moved.
Curtis moves.
Second.
Any discussion on rescinding these two policies? I think it's, keep this one short, so a roll call vote.
Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Right, the motion passes, and I get to pass it, right back to you, Julia.
Thank you. We are going to move to the Business Administrator Report, and that will be Joe.
Just getting my screen sharing set up there. All right, so the first item within this update is a field and track project update. We are, we're pretty much there, we have a punch list of, of items that are being completed right now. Some of them will, will need to carry forward into the spring, once grass is growing again and final checks and, and improvements can be done. But the, the facility is in wonderful shape, our track and field team is ecstatic, our lacrosse and soccer teams, from every student that I've spoken with and been able to take a, take a quick look at it. They have loved it, they can't wait to be out there as soon as they can. So we are, we're pretty much there. The finishing touches that we are now working on are trying to figure out exactly what we can get into this project as it relates to some of the very, very needed field and track equipment, the, the loose equipment that is utilized around the, around the track and within the, the field sports, as well as bleachers and an audio system. So those are, those are some of the items where we're really trying to get finer points on them now that we're clear of all of the other expenditures that, that existed prior. So we're, we're zeroing in on that, and I think over the course of the next couple of months, those things will be finalized as well, and then we'll be marching towards the first season for the field and track team, as soon as they are ready in the spring, the facility is ready for them. As far as the field on the interior of the track, right now, what we're looking towards is maybe playing a game or two at the end of their season, but we really want to make sure that the sod continues to, to root, and that, as you can see right now, especially in the overhead shot, those, those lines where you see the rolls of sod still having some division between them, those will, will merge into each other as the grass continues to, to grow laterally, and as the soil continues to settle. And so the architects will be out a couple of times over the course of the spring to run some tests and to let us know how things are going. So all in all, really wonderful news, we're excited, it's, it's been a great project, I have a lot of thanks for, for C H A, for Skanska, for Keller. Keller really came through with some, some kind of odd conditions to try to work in last fall, over the winter and the spring. They, they got right through the summer and, and brought us to this point, very near completion with, with a whole lot of class and, and precision, and, and they really did a wonderful job, so thanks in advance, before we're even fully, fully done, to everybody involved in the project, because they, they did wonderful work. The next items for the school committee will be, we look forward to planning and hosting some sort of grand opening in the spring that, that can and should involve the field and track team and, and their schedule, and somehow create some kind of a grand event. That's number one, and then number two is, I would like to continue to work on the landscaping around the project, right now, it's a fairly blank canvas, I, I think that we have, we have space for the development of shade trees, which are functional, but also beautiful. We can, we can start to talk about some potential gifts and memorials and, and things that can help us really build some, some culture and, and history and celebration around the outside of this facility as well. So that's something that I think we'll, we'll try to figure out how to, how to. celebration around the outside of this facility as well. Um, so that's something that I think we'll, we'll try to figure out how to, how to parse out and and bring forward in the coming months, um, as we look towards the spring. Are there any questions on the field and track? I'm not seeing any, but just got miniature versions of you off on the side there. Okay. Um, next up is uh, Budget Timeline Priority Review. Um, so here's uh, here's what we have as we look all the way ahead FY twenty-six, which is uh, scarily coming up pretty quickly. Um, on the left-hand side, I've got priorities. Um, figuring out the Mount Greylock Regional School Resource Needs, uh, to me will be the most complicated set of discussions that we will have uh, over the course of the next few months. Um, the departments within the school right now are working on understanding, um, based on student enrollment demand. Their staffing levels, um, projected schedules, um, they're working on um, trying to figure out what they would like to propose needing, um, in order for them to function um, to the best of their abilities. We are simultaneously trying to perform um, a separate review. Trying to figure out how can we best describe and understand and um, amplify the voices of the building, um, to best advocate for the needs of the building when it comes to um, providing the best school that we possibly can for our students. Um, those conversations, they will start in December, so um, with the next school committee meeting, um, and they will undoubtedly continue as agenda items through January, February, and then into the public hearing in March. Um, that's a headliner, um, reading intervention needs. Um, we have had a district-wide team that has been working, um, both through the Dyslexia Institute as well as um, internally and, and with DESI resources on trying to best understand how to improve literacy instruction within the district, pre K through twelve. Um, we've made additional investments this year in grade seven and eight, um, as it relates to um, special education resources. And uh, trying to better plan for the future, um, in that regard, um, but we will definitely be bringing forward some um, plans and priorities as, as we look towards FY twenty-six, um, to try to add more um, weight and ability there. Um, the topic of communication, understanding, awareness, and relationships. Um, this is, it, it's, it's an amorphous conversation here as a single bullet point. Um, but as we move through the next few months, trying to figure out how do we communicate with our community, how do we best um, uh, listen to them, how do we best uh, serve needs by, by having both inward communications as well as outward communications. Um, that's an area where as, as we look at the budget, I could foresee um, proposing some modifications to how we go about things and to the funding levels associated with them, um, as we look at FY twenty-six. Um, improving continuous assessment and review practices, this goes to all the benchmarking assessments that we do. Um, at a regular clip through the elementary school and that we are expanding into the middle, uh, middle school and potentially high school. Um, there could be some budget impacts there. Um, and then curriculum adoption. Um, this year, we are field testing a uh, new math curriculum within um, the two elementary schools. And um, we could have uh, funding needs associated with adopting a new curriculum as early as next year. It might not happen in time for next year, but it, but it might. So uh, that could be a conversation on our plates as well. And then with all of those bullets there, um, trying to avoid any deficits through deferred ma- maintenance or, or other things that we might be tempted to defer in the quest of doing something else. Um, those are gonna be conversations as well, uh, because I, I, I do feel like with, with the new building um, at the middle high school, as well as our twenty-plus-year-old buildings at the two elementary schools. Um, we need to keep up the process of um, maintaining and improving and, and um, and if we lose sight of that, um, it will be short-sighted. So, um, those are what I already know to be priorities. Um, that said, um, we are uh, going through the process, um, both at the superintendent level as well as, as well as the principals, um, of working with school councils right now to, to try to understand the voices that are coming through with them. Um, we're certainly making uh, a number of realities clear through conversations around here. Some things that we already know to be uh, potential priorities that we know to be um, needing discussion at the school committee level. Um, but uh, school council input will be coming. Mount Greylock, I believe, will be going in December, and then the two elementary schools in January. Um, so we'll start to hear early and often from them as we move um, through the regularly scheduled December and January school committee meetings. Um, other revenue inputs, notably Chapter seventy, Chapter seventy-one. Um, those will probably not come until uh, at some point mid, late January, which means the February school committee meeting would be the first time um, that those would be uh, ready for review. Um, and incorporation into draft budgets. Um, I think we'll probably start to get the finance subcommittee together, um, more often as we begin to have that data available. Um, so the finance subcommittee will be working on that um, in late January and very early February, prior to the full school committee, um, seeing and reviewing. Um, then the major cost drivers, health insurance, it's likely the Berkshire Health Group will be voting um, its rates in late January, which means the early February meeting would be the first time that the full school committee meeting, uh, the full school committee would have that data available. Um, as far as our um, union contracts, um, we are uh, still within the current contracts as of um, the next school year as of FY twenty-six. Um, so we will have projections ready for the finance subcommittee and for this full school committee um, based on best available data, um, regarding um, staff, uh, current staff, so level staffing as of um, early January. We'll, we'll make sure to have those projections ready. Um, and then other key areas, um, in terms of other revenue sources, grants, areas like that. I think we'll probably be looking at a lot of that come February. Um, so public hearing is currently scheduled for March thirteenth. Um, our deadline for uh, sending a budget to our towns is um, March thirtieth, so we do have some time in between if we need it to uh, continue our discussions and to um, have the school committee come to a vote. Um, but March thirteenth currently is our public hearing. Um, town meetings, Williamstown currently scheduled for May twentieth, Lanesboro scheduled for June tenth. Um, I don't think I've heard any, any indications that those uh, might be changing, but, but it's always possible um, that either town could change its um, town meeting date. So that's the overview, the high level. Um, are there any questions on it? Okay, uh, Jose.
Sorry, Joe, just uh, thank you for, for this, and it's really helpful to have an outline for us, for the, for the community, um, and members of our community to kind of be able to keep track of, of the process. Just, um, curious about how and whether you and your sort of unique role as our interim superintendent, you know, who's taken on a lot of responsibility on, on whether or how additional support might be helpful to you. Um, you know, imagining, I don't know what that could look like, but just, just curious about, um, you know, how we're doing administratively and, and sort of your ability and ability of your team to kind of, um, you know, guide us through this, this process.
Uh, I feel comfort, I feel very comfortable with this process with the team that we have in-house right now. Um, as we look towards next year, um, there are a couple of things that I'm currently working through with respect to how we can have additional support within the district, um, as, as we look at uh, next summer, next school year. Um, those are areas that I don't really have anything to present right now. And I also think that from a budget impact for next year, everything that I'm thinking about right now does live within the the budget that you would expect, given a superintendent and an assistant superintendent. So um, you know, wi- without, without contracting, but also without expanding um, tho- those lines, um, but repurposing them in ways that um, that I think will maximize what we're able to do here over the next year and a half.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep. Any other questions on any of that? I did have this other slide just around, um, important dates, and, and I had, I had given you the, the, the punchline, which is March thirtieth of twenty twenty-five is, is the latest date. Um, given our regional agreement for us to, uh, to approve a budget. Um, that said, uh, our towns often love to have information, um, as early as we can possibly give it to them. So, um, as early as our public hearing can happen and a budget can get approved, um, is, is definitely uh, preferred for or by them. All right. Next item within the Business Administrator Report is the Williamstown Elementary School uh, floor maintenance, equipment, and consumables, um, uh, agenda item, um, up for approval. Um, so the Williamstown Elementary School floors, they are twenty, what, twenty-three, twenty-four years old right now. Um, we, over the course of, of working on, um, how to, how to best um, improve, maintain, plan for new flooring eventually. Um, we came to the realization that Williamstown Elementary School has not had the same types of floor cleaning and maintenance equipment, um, that the other two schools have had. Um, which, which is a bit of a, of an um, oddity, quite honestly. Um, so with that in mind, we have looked at how we can better care for both our hard floors. Um, those are in all the main hallways and in um, portions of each classroom. Uh, as well as the, the carpets that are in um, a portion of uh, pretty much every classroom in the building as well. Um, so for hard floor cleaning, carpet cleaning, um, it would be a pair of machines um, and some upfront consumables, um, that would need to be purchased. Um, we are looking to have, um, have the school committee approve an eighteen thousand dollar um, budget coming from the Williams College gift to Wes um, for the purpose of acquiring those pieces of equipment and allowing the team, the custodial team at Wes, um, to get moving with them. Um, they, they will allow for best practices around daily and weekly maintenance of, of the floors. Um, they will probably extend the current floor's uh, lifespan, um, which will ultimately be a cost saving for uh, for the district. Um, and the equipment that we are uh, working on procuring um, will be applicable to any new floors that are, that are put in over the next five to ten years as well. Um, so I can certainly uh, answer any questions on that. Um, the, the motion would be to approve spending up to eighteen thousand dollars on floor cleaning equipment and consumables out of the Williams College gift to Wes.
Is there someone who wants to make that motion?
I'll move that motion. Oh, sorry, Carrie.
No, that's all right. Ursula moves, I'll second.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Joe?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead, Carrie, and then Jose.
What exactly are we purchasing?
Um, the, for hard floor cleaning, um, it is a device called a CT seventy-one. Um, it is a walk behind, um, I believe forty-eight inch wide spinning disc where you can have different types of uh, floor cleaning discs along with um, it uh, puts down a cleaning solution in front. It spins the disc to clean the floor and then it vacuums up uh, the resulting liquid and sediment. Um, and it will allow for, traditionally, the school has actually been cleaned with um, mops and push brooms. Um, and for a building of that size, to have that be the approach that a, that a small team uses um, is uh, it's, it's um, extraordinary, uh, for sure. Um, and then with carpet cleaning, um, it is a uh, a piece of commercial carpet cleaning equipment um, that again has a solution that's sprayed down spinning discs and then a vacuum, but it's designed for carpets. Um, so it's a deep carpet type cleaner that can um, pull um, pull dirt up from the low pile carpets that are common in this type of setting. Um, the CT seventy-one is uh, about eleven thousand dollars and the um, and the carpet cleaning machine is about six.
And what, do they come with servicing plans?
Yes, uh, they, they, they come with an initial three-year um, warranty and, and service plan, and then after that, you can purchase um, follow-on service plan. So they're, they're designed for municipal purchasing environment so that um, all of that works within, within contracting. And they, and they're both going to be purchased off of state contracts from one of the state contract vendors, so that, that part of it is uh, simplified from a procurement perspective.
Jose? You would raise your hand?
Yeah, thanks, Julia. Just, uh, kind of following on uh, Carrie's question, Joe, this, on the consumables part, I'm guessing this is probably related to solutions and the parts that um, we need to be replaced on it. I don't know, maybe they're part of what the, I, I, what could you speak to, what the consumables are?
Yeah.
Um, and what fraction of costs they represent?
Two things, I believe. Um, one are the, the pads that, that are used, they're, they're equivalent to like a, a mop head or a, a broom head. Um, but they are, I think for, for both machines, they are discs that you stick up onto the machine, and then once you're done, you unpeel the Velcro and you clean them. Um, so there are a variety of types of abrasives and, and things like that, that, that you use. Um, and then the other would be cleaning solution, um, that you purchase in bulk and uh, mix with water to um, to run through the machines. Um, the one thousand dollars that's, that's quoted here is is what the team had said would be about a one-year, one-year supply, um, to allow them to utilize each machine um, through at least their first year, and then about a thousand dollars would be that annual cost, um, after that um, for them. And, and that would not necessarily add a thousand dollars to a custodial um, line because currently they have other things that they've been purchasing to manually um, go about that process. And I, I, I don't have an exact comparison, but the but it's a reasonable comparable automation.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. And then, sorry, uh, Julie, if I could just ask it, just, just a fa- quick follow-up. Um, if I may, the uh, if Joe, the could you explain to us again why, or could you explain to us why um, the use of the gift in this way, uh, is the way that you're proposing for the district to acquire the equipment? Um, as opposed to, you know, having it budgeted or become a part of our, you know, annual budgeting process that you just outlined for us?
Both pieces of equipment are, are capital costs in that they are long-term investments in, um, in the building. Um, they are also both directly in line with preserving and maintaining um, the building i- in the way that it is, so they feel like um, the right type of thing to pull from that. Unless we were to wait another set, seven months to be able to purchase them through, we, there's no reason that we could not um, budget for them as a part of our annual budget. Um, but given the way the team is really trying to push to do things better now, and we're entering the winter season where it would be really helpful to be able to maintain now. And it was not something that we had um, on our radar, and it does fit within the purview of of, of the way the gift has been used. It just feels like all of those dots line up in a way where it just makes sense to, to go forward.
And, and then just the very last question, apologies to the uh, could you, can you give us a sense of, of what amount is available as a part of the, the Williams College gift to Wes?
Um, I believe as of right now, it's about one point seven million dollars. But I could be, I could be off there. Um, that also does not represent any growth that happened over the course of last year through the endowment. Um, we do not yet have those updated numbers from the college, but that's something that, uh, that we are working on.
Any other questions for Joe? So we have a motion from Ursula and a second from Carrie. And hearing no other comments or questions, let's move to a roll call vote. Bo and I.
Henri, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
That motion passes. Thank you. Joe, if you can take us into the superintendent's report, please.
Yes, absolutely. So first, we we have an information-only item. We we don't really have anything ready for discussion yet, but with question two that we had discussed, I believe it was just during last month's school committee meeting. Question two passed last week. Last week through it it seems time seems so compressed and extended all at once right now. With it passing, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued its initial guidance, which was included in your packet earlier this week as a PDF. Essentially, what it states is that MCAS as as a determining part of graduation requirements within the state. The earliest that that change, the removal of MCAS from from its former role will be the earliest that that will happen will be December. So anybody who is retaking MCAS between now and December can and should do so. And if they pass the MCAS and if that was their their final gate, then that is valid. After that, it will be up to and the state will be issuing additional guidance. It will be up to each local school district to determine how it how it determines graduation requirements in line with the state's education standards. So that is where we are as of right now. I do imagine that by December or at the latest January, there will be follow-up discussion that will have a whole lot more content and potential decision-making potential. Any questions on the information? There? All right. So next up, also within your packet, a series of enrollment updates. Because of all of the other presentation items that we have for tonight, I chose to not package the enrollment update into a presentation. And instead, to say that I think that there are two key things to pull out of that information. Well, I'll preface that with I included the NESDEC.
Joe, would you mind stopping sharing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I included the NESDEC enrollment report, which includes projections, partly because we, over the last year, had had renewed our our use of that service. And their enrollment presentations are one of the valuable pieces of information that they share, where they pull information not only from us and from the state, but also from other key indicators like like births, like new building construction, new housing units coming online, things like that. So they pull a variety of information sources together to be able to give school districts and school committees more information than they typically have individually at their disposal. Part of what the data says, and this is part one, is that our enrollment is tracking with with the key data that that they pull in. Meaning, when you look at kindergarten enrollment, it tracks roughly with recorded births within the district. That, to some extent, goes counter to what we have we have traditionally run on using the idea that employment within our region drives more around enrollment than people being born within this within this region. Meaning, we oftentimes believe that if if an art museum or a college or a major employer like a hospital is hiring new people, expanding their workforce, that that is what drives our enrollment numbers. And and instead, I think it's it's valuable to glean that that it's actually a blend. It's it it's a blend of who is being born here within our towns, living within our towns, as well as those factors. And and the new housing units that came online within our school district, notably a few years ago, those drove an increase in enrollment at the time. So those factors, that's bullet point number one that I would want you to take home. And then number two is, we have a number of grades within our school district that are either extra large or extra small relative to the norm. That is going to drive some perceived increases or decreases in enrollment. Notably, our senior class last year was was pretty large. Taking that out of the averages and and out of the the total count within the district is driving our enrollment number lower this year than where it was last year. In terms of ins and outs of people either enrolling anew or departing, that is that is holding fairly steady right now, based on the based on the data that we have available. One enrollment update oriented item that I did want to bring forward tonight is we have been talking within the district about ways to potentially perform both welcome and exit type interviews with families within the district. Welcome interviews allowing us to get a better sense of families and students as as they are first arriving, trying to standardize on ways of approaching that. That's something that we're discussing within the administrative team across principals and the district office. And similarly, when families are moving away from the district, we are looking to start to collect more information about where they're headed, what their experiences were, as that is valuable, valuable information to bring in as as people are are departing as well. So those are a couple, a couple of key points. But if there are any questions on the enrollment data, as was shared in the packet, I can certainly speak directly to any of that, too. All right. District, oh, Jose. And you you're on mute.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. It's nothing certainly firm in my head or well articulated in my mind in terms of what to ask, but I think you just bring up the enrollment numbers at the regional high school, and particularly with with grades. I think it's grades eleven and twelve that you that you had highlighted and how that is quite different from last year's graduating class, at least in terms of terms of number of students. And you you hinted at something, I think, regarding the need for decisions, or it was unclear to me what what you were communicating. Just wonder if you could revisit that or or I don't know if I I had missed something that you were trying to communicate, but I was just wondering what you what you were, what you wanted to communicate to us about the, but you know, how the the changing numbers or demographics, particularly those upper level grades.
I don't, nothing about decisions. Having having a grade 12 and a grade 11 and to some extent, a grade 10 that are much smaller than what we had at those highest levels of the high school over the last few years and what we will have in coming years. So as as you look down down the line at at grades nine, eight, seven, next year's seventh grade will be very similar to the current grade seven. Those numbers are going to bring going to bring Mount Greylock Regional School back up to to significantly larger enrollment numbers. That data is something that I I didn't I didn't speak to it here because I I was going to save it for December and January and February, but the the challenges that the school faces around the number of enrolled students, how to best schedule and how to offer the appropriate number of sections within each course. Those challenges, when you have swings of one year, you've got 70 students who are seniors who are desiring every every this and that class. I'm not going to characterize them in any way, but that that you can possibly offer. And and then the next year, you might drop down 30 students within that senior class. That is a challenge. It's a challenge even for the for the best and most magical of guidance offices and schedulers. So it's something that we're going to be grappling with. So if 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 that's part of what you're getting at, absolutely, that's that's true. And that's that's part of our challenge.
Thanks, Joe. And I can I have a second question that's related to this topic, but I can I can wait for other folks to who might have a question. If it's okay, Julie, I could just just ask ask what I have in my mind. Just looking at, and again, I I don't know if I'm looking at the data in the right way or have enough understanding about, you know, how our demographics, particularly between our two member towns are changing. But it it looks on average at our elementary schools that it's, you know, in terms of population difference, in terms of the student body, two to one roughly between Williamstown Elementary and Lanesboro Elementary. And those numbers shift closer to three to one when you get to the regional middle school and high school. And I don't know if if it's fair to project, why maybe that's the question. Are are we losing Lanesboro students to other opportunities or other school systems? Or, you know, I I'm not sure how to look at those data. But that's that's the question.
There are a few different ways to answer that. One is the trend is actually, it has been for the last few years based on the elementary school enrollment. The trend has been that Lanesborough's population has been growing relative to Williamstown's. That has been the case for the last, I think, three consecutive years. So seeing that reflected there, it isn't that magically, when you move from elementary to middle and to the middle high school, that that happens. But what you're seeing there is reflective of Lanesborough's population is is growing. The I I I think that's the that's the best and most direct way to respond to it.
Perfect. No, thank you, Joe. And maybe just to make clear, there are no concerns. Well, I don't know. Are are there concerns that we are looting losing students in our middle school, high school to other educational opportunities or or?
Generally, post-COVID, the the spot that we are most likely to lose a student to would be McCann. And and so and so that, you know, that's more of a of of course, a number that you see as you as you move into those upper grades. So that's, you know, and and to what extent that changes over time. McCann is offering more varied programming than it than it ever has before, which is a wonderful thing. And those opportunities are very real and very present. And so I I I appreciate having that opportunity within within our region as opposed to being concerned about it somehow being in competition at all.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is the District Improvement Plan update. And I apologize because I had planned on producing a a a nice, beautiful presentation for you of updates. And then what I ended up doing was today, kind of late within the packet, I I placed really what what had been the raw notes, the raw working working texts. But what I'm going to do here tonight is this PDF that I just screen shared now is within your packet, it's within the public packet. I'm going to provide you a quick walkthrough of of updates so that I don't read this verbatim. But you all can always refer to these in in more detail, and I'll make sure that this goes up on our website alongside the District Improvement Plan as soon as we are done here tonight or tomorrow. So first item, create a renewed focus on best practices in teaching all students. The the high level here is that our expanded use of benchmark assessments within the middle school. We completed the first round within ELA and math this fall. There will be two more points for assessment later this year. The middle school teams and the the front office and the district office within the middle high school are all reviewing that data now and will be utilizing it as an input as we move through the rest of this year and as we plan for the program of studies and what we need for next year. Alongside that, a variety of PD was selected, rolled out and has been happening over the course of this fall and will continue through this school year. When when I have the note that there might be FY26 and beyond budget implications, it is that through through that continual evaluation of how things are working within within the district, specifically right now within the middle school, that will drive investments that we are proposing making within the middle and high school as we look towards next year. Plan for implementation of the 2023 Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Framework. DESI has has moved a little bit more slowly than I think it had wanted to with respect to being able to roll that out fully. So our team within the district has been participating in PD around it. And at this point, we're we're really awaiting additional guidance and and detail from the state. So we are in a little bit of a holding pattern. But as we look at what we are expecting to be required of us, starting in the fall of 2026, sorry, no, I I should say fall of 2025, fall of 2025, we we might see some changes to what we need to do within our program of studies to make sure that we fully adopt. So there could be some budget implications there. Planning for processing, selecting and implementing an updated math curriculum in the elementary schools. The Curriculum Selection Committee for Math Curriculum worked through last year looking at a variety of curricula. They ended up choosing the I-ready classroom math to field test within every grade level within the elementary schools this year. Based on how that progresses so far, it's been going swimmingly and people, I I think, pretty much to a person, have been have been excited about the future with it. Depending upon how that field test proceeds, we might move to adopt that elementary school-wide. We might say, let's do an expanded test so that we can dip our toes in the water a little bit more. Or if if somehow that that turns, we could be saying that we're going to go back to the drawing board and select something else to to give a try next year. So expect additional conversations and decisions on that as we move through the rest of this school year and into the budget for next year. The focus on increased literacy at all grade levels. One, we've had a district-wide team of reading interventionists, district administrators, principals who have been working through the Massachusetts Dyslexia Institute for almost the last year, along with other Department of Elementary and Secondary Education resources. They are at the point now, having gathered knowledge, having collaborated with other groups within the state, where we, they are going to be developing recommendations and and a PD plan for how to improve how we do literacy instruction going forward on a pre-K through 12 basis. We're trying to look at it comprehensively so that early literacy is oftentimes the place for most investment so that you have less of a burden later as you move through the pre-K through 12 progression. But trying to come up with the strategic supports as we move through every grade level. Critical, something that we and other school districts are looking at through a lot of different lenses than than I think how districts had looked at, looked at them in the past. We did, for this year, we contracted with a reading specialist for direct instruction support within grade seven and eight for specific targeted supports. And we also relaunched a co-teaching program for seventh grade English. Those are two areas where you will likely see additional, more permanent types of investment as we look at next year and beyond to try to add more, more weight and resource to them to continue improvement. So more information to come there. Within goal two, the student support and social emotional wellness area. We had talked about a selected population of students that could benefit from additional really behavior-oriented programming capabilities. We are continuing to evaluate needs there. But at the moment, we're not foreseeing creating a specific program, trying to budget for and, and develop it in time for the coming school year. We actually think that we're, we're on a pretty good path there and we have a good blend of resources that are already, already present, available and in use. So we're feeling pretty good about that one right now. Curriculum review. We, um, we did, um, expand the way that we look at, um, at benchmarking assessment data, MCAS scores, blended with classroom grade scoring. And this is an area where at the district level, principals, special education office and individual teaching staff, we're currently taking a one-to-one type approach there where we're really looking at individual students as case studies and trying to understand what is happening and why. For a district of our size, that has been, and I think will be the, the best method that we have in the moment for addressing that goal and for being able to, to find continuous improvement paths specifically for students within special education programs. Goal three, technology. We have, um, we've been going through a process of evaluating the various technology tools that we have acquired and, and used over the years. Certainly during COVID, there was a significant expansion of the need to try to do a lot through technology, do a lot through remote and Chromebooks and iPads and, and to do that in a way that, um, that, that may do with what we could have. That said, we're at a point where we can take stock of all of those tools that we have within our kit, evaluate how we are using them, whether or not we are maximizing their use, whether or not there are alternatives that are better, whether or not we need them at all, given where we stand within the world right now. So far, we've evaluated the three primary tools that are most used, especially within the elementary school level, IXL, Lexia, Nuzella. Those three tools will all see varying forms of reimplementation, reinvestment, ways to maximize what we get out of them. And that will be happening over the course of the next nine months. So in time for the next school year, re-envisioning how we utilize them will, will be complete. And then now the conversation's expanding to the, the longer list of longer tail tools that we use across smaller groups of students. So that area of the district improvement plan continuing as planned. Enhancing computer and network security over the, over the spring and the summer. The district team implemented a number of enhanced network security measures. Those are rolled out, working for us, doing well now. We have the transition to one domain, um, which is almost complete. There are certainly some, some tools, some areas where we're still making sure that, that things are in good shape and able to be used as, as we want them to. The big advantage there, it significantly simplified the scope of how many different contracts do we have? How many different accounts do we have? How do we administer people moving from one school to another? How do we make it so that it's coherent? And how do we secure all of that? So that in progress, wonderful. It, it, to me, it's, it's one of those things where I, I, I wish, now that we've done it, I wish we had done it six or seven years ago. But, you know, that's, that's always something to, um, to know for the future if we ever go through any other transitions. And then the Google and multi-factor authentication within Google implementation, that is complete. Students and staff are within Google. The, where we can have multi-factor authentication within staff and, and others, that implementation is complete. So we are in good shape there, a lot of progress. Artificial intelligence, AI. We've done initial PD. We've developed draft of, of guidance for our teachers and to inform our student handbooks. We are waiting on, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is rolling out its own guidance on artificial intelligence, how to best use it, how to best regulate its use and so on. That is something that we're hoping comes over the course of the next couple of months so that we can merge what the state is saying, what we have developed, and get it into a consolidated set so that we can, we can continue to work down that path. I think this is one of those areas where, um, rather than putting our head down in the sand and, and hoping that it, that it doesn't come, instead figuring out the judicious and appropriate ways to embrace it, to educate and to help guide, that work continues. And I'm really thankful for the, for the team that we have internally that has that perspective as opposed to ignoring or, or trying to shut it off, which is just not a practical approach, in my opinion, to, to the topic at all. Digital wellness programming. We, Max Stossel in the spring, for those of you that participated, he provided one of the most eye-opening forms of presentation and bodies of information that, that I think many students and staff and families who were able to spend time with him could imagine Katie Greer came this fall and provided a, a different perspective, but one that I think was equally impactful in that we saw students walking out, talking about, well, I'm taking that app off my phone, or I never had any idea that they track that, or wow, I, I didn't know that. And with the small number, and this is where I'm, I'm highlighting, community event attendance, not just within this area, but within all kinds of evening events that we've had within the area of education, PD, you know, things that are, that are not our, our, our theater, our sports, those types of events, which remain well-attended. Community event attendance has been challenging. With Katie, uh, there's only a handful of, of families there, to be honest. She delivered content that was incredibly valuable, informative. And we really need to figure out how to improve the ways that we get families into those seats so that they can gain that valuable information, so that they can use it within their own households. So that, that's a challenge that's on us, that's on me. And it's one of the things that I'll be pointing out here within superintendent goals in a few minutes. And then social dilemma, uh, the, I'm going to use it again, eye-opening movie. The screenings are continuing in grades five, six, seven, had already saw it last spring and grades eight through twelve. So those are being scheduled and, and run through the school year. And then we are currently developing a program committee in-house that will be focused on how can we create more grassroots, in-house, community-led content and moments to be able to gather around, talk about the topic of digital wellness, talk about wait until eighth, figure out how to harness the power of our community to be able to grapple with these issues more effectively as, as a community, as opposed to as individual households wondering, does everybody else have a mobile phone? Does everybody else's child have a Snapchat account? Does everybody else get to, and instead of living in silos within our individual households, being able to work on that as a community, it's, it's something that we are trying to more actively approach this year and in coming years. Goal four, belonging, equity, inclusion and diversity. The curriculum and materials review for bias, tools and process and PD plan that, that Joel and, and the district and, and school teams developed over the course of last year and have rolled out this year. It's been going really well. It's been going so well that the state is actually promoting the process that was developed as a model for other districts. We, we've had a couple of districts reach out to us saying, hey, we, we heard you've got something great. Can we learn from it? Which is wonderful. It is, it's a little bit of proof, but at the same time, the proof is really in, after we've gone through the first year, and then we do continuous review every year after the results that come out of that, that review effort. So that once again, might bring some budget requests for FY twenty-six if we are able to, in time for that budget, identify areas where we'd like to put additional investments to help work on areas where we have identified bias and issues within curriculum or materials. Reducing chronic absenteeism, you heard some good news from Nolan tonight. Broadly, I would characterize it as the administrative teams within each school building are, are working with individual families, trying to identify the whats and the whys for absences. The gap between unexcused absences and excused absences is something, it's a challenge that the state has certainly put forward with its guidance and its regulations and its requirements. And we are trying to best understand why a student is absent when they are and try to have the relationships in the sense of belonging that students feel in coming into school and wanting to be in school, help to overcome that. It's something that right now we're handling through the individual relationship building process. But we certainly might be rolling out additional, more formal, structured processes as we look forward. The other area, and, and it's one that I, that I do hope we're able to talk about through data. We do have a number of long-term absences that happen every year driven by family interests that, that I, I want to go and spend a month with my extended family in a different part of the country or the world. How do we better address that challenge? Because technically that student is then chronically absent. And then the ratio of unexcused to excused absences, that's where we are in understanding of a student being sick or absent for, for a reason that, that is marked as excused versus unexcused. Trying to do the data analysis between, between those and trying to decrease that ratio of unexcused to excused is something that's a concerted effort working within the context of chronic absenteeism. And now we're at the last goal, goal five, district building. Creating more and more frequent opportunities for students, families and staff to work together to build district cohesion and strength. Part of this is creating the opportunities for people across buildings, across towns, to be able to be together more often, building relationships. Part of it is us improving the communication around those opportunities, marketing those opportunities to people to be, so that they participate in them. Those two things are related, but they're also separate and we need to be working towards both. It's linked to a lot of other areas that are within the district improvement plan and that are also within superintendent goals tonight. This winter, um, we are going to be working on, I will be working on what we've talked about in the past, which is how can we better enable all of the different community groups within the school district sphere to cooperate, to expand what they do and to be able to carry more of, more of the, the standards and weights for, for the district. That is, uh, that is and needs to be a, a big area of focus for us. And then meanwhile, the school's principals and teachers are continuing the work of bringing together the elementary school grades at Mount Greylock for as many events and, and club cooperations as they possibly can. Just today, grades five and six headed up to the middle high school to view a rehearsal for Hamlet, which is happening at Mount Greylock for the general public tomorrow night. So elementary school students, grades five and six, were able to come and, and be a part of that, be together, be at Mount Greylock, which again, is, it's just an example of trying to get more people together earlier and more often across the district. I will note, just because I, I feel like it's, it's, it can't be noted enough, the geographic and transportation challenges that we face when it takes twenty-five to thirty minutes to drive between our two elementary schools. That's a durable challenge that we and the larger community needs to try to figure out how to ameliorate, best address. So it's just something that, that we've got there as a, as a placeholder always. And then streamlining school and district website communications. Parent Square rollout has been great. We continue to see strong usage, strong responses as, as parents and guardians are, are utilizing it. There are definitely ways that we continue to improve the rate at which families engage with the content that, that comes through Parent Square. So there's continuing work there, but in general, that as one primary effort that we've had, going really well. We have made efforts within the website to make the three schools navigation consistent to make sure that information is offered more consistently than it has been in the past. But it's an area that needs a lot of focus and I'll be talking about that in a minute. And then the Student Opportunity Act, the three-year plan that needed to be done and adopted was approved in April of 2024. So that part of the district improvement plan is, um, is up and live and, and it's good. So that's the update on the district improvement plan. There is more detail within this document, but I wanted to make sure to touch as many areas as I could. Are there any questions? Carrie?
So I lost track, but I think it was about a half a dozen times that you mentioned budget increases or potential budget impacts. Do you have any sense of a kind of a cumulative impact? Or just anything more? Or is this something that we should share with our finance committees at this point? And just say, you know, watch this so that you have a sense of kind of what's coming down the road?
What, what, what we have done over the last few years is try to telegraph earlier and earlier in every budget season. Here are realities of, of wants and interests. In reality, not all of these will translate into, here's a proposed budget. Because I, I believe that if we did everything that we wanted to do, and, and, and that is not what any citizen, or it's not what many citizens of our towns would want us to do, we could pretty quickly stack up a ten or fifteen percent budget increase. That, that's not what we've ever done. It's, it's not what we're planning on doing. But I do think it's worthwhile pointing out all of the good work that we really want to be able to do and the hard process that then pairs that down to what we really can do and to be able to explain that. It's in the name of transparency. It's in the name also of trying to be as proactive as we can about communicating here all the different things. So I do think that as part of this budget year, um, I will be, uh, a little bit more upfront. a little bit more upfront in December and January and February about here's what it would cost if we wanted to, or if we were able to. But ultimately, we will also pare that down into, into something smaller. It's a long-winded way of saying, I don't have numbers behind this that are magically ready to pop out with a click of a button tonight, but each of these will be talking points as we, as we look at December, January, February, and March coming up.
Okay. I think in a, if you could maybe in the next month's packet include this, but with a highlight on each item that has potential budget implications, that would be really helpful.
Yes. And some of these areas, we do not yet know what we would propose. You know, so there are areas where we could, we could propose four or five different things as our best foot forward. So not everything will come with a, with a number.
Yeah.
But certainly more.
I'm not asking for numbers. I'm just, yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I just had a quick visit there. Thank you so much for this. And I think the detail, the thought, the detail that you're sharing with us regarding each of the goals and the thought behind each of them, I think is quite commendable. And I hope, and I'm sure our community will appreciate this. Just had a question on goal four, on the, you know, the updates, which for most of the goals, kind of speak to measurable, plans that with impacts or consequences that are measurable or identifiable. They all seem pretty clear for most of the goals, but I struggled a bit in this goal. And I appreciate that it's an incredibly, you know, hard thing to both articulate and how do you identify progress. But, you know, that second half, particularly 4.2, you know, like someone might ask, and this is, this may sound like I'm being partially critical, but I'm not, because I know there's a lot of thought and care that goes into this. But someone might ask, you know, what does, what does it mean to develop a district-wide perspective, for instance? What does it mean to find a way to develop a relationship? Like, how do we know what that looks like? And I guess what I'm curious about is, as you, you know, these are all active verbs here, as you work to develop and find ways, what are some tools that you have available or your team has available to help guide this process in a way that's meaningful, in a way that, you know, in a year's time, we can look at and can see and measure the progress that you've made, particularly in this, you know, in my perspective, very important goal?
The measurable progress here plainly is in decreasing the number of chronic, chronically absent students within specific demographic groups. The progress that we are, the progress update that I supplied tonight is, is that this school year, well, every school year, principals' offices, guidance offices, reach out to students when they are, students' families when the student is absent, and encourage them to get into school. That said, this year, we're taking more of an approach around data collection as to why a student is absent, trying to get to those root causes a little bit more aggressively, and trying to work on a district-wide basis, on a team basis, understanding what works to get students back into school and what are we seeing. So when I say district-wide perspective, I just mean that we're trying to work as a team across the district to understand, well, this worked for this student, that worked for that student, here's what we're seeing here. Are you seeing the same thing? What worked, what didn't work? And so ultimately, the data that we hope to share at the end of this school year and at the end of the next school year is the declining numbers within each specific group of students, as well as I'll be able to characterize using the data that we're collecting, why various students were absent. And I'll do that in a way that anonymize, like that is deeply personal for the staff who are involved, but that also anonymizes it so that we're not, you know, so that we're not talking about specific students. So we're using the benefit of being a 1,200-student district to, to be as intimate as we can with, with the 100 or so students, say, where we have daily questions, concerns, and are working with them and their families personally.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Well, try to find.
Joe, if I can just also give you a time check. I think this is going a lot longer than you had originally anticipated, so not to cut you short, but want to just keep, let you keep your mind on that.
Thank you. And I'll try, I'll try to be brief here, although there is one item that I just, I needed to share that might add. Last night was the, was the Mount Greylock Unified Classic, the red versus white basketball game within the unified basketball world. This, this picture on the left-hand side, it was standing room only for the fans. It was, it was awesome. It was the kind of event where the common conversation among staff members was, we just, we just wish every night could be like this one. So just wanted to, wanted to bring that up, because it was like, I figured we'd be segueing between various more, more challenging topics. So this one was, it was awesome. Okay. So superintendent's goals, annual plan. We are in a little bit of a unique spot, given that I am very happily the interim, as opposed to somebody on a, on a permanent contract, and that I will probably be, be serving you in this way until the end of June of 2026. So with that in mind, trying to come up with a way to offer meaningful goals, meaningful metrics, but at the same time, do that in a way where it's November right now, want to get through this school year, and then have one more year where we're all able to see progress. So what I'm going to put before you are four goals that I would love for us to either approve this month or next month. I would propose that we then do a mid-year check-in in February, and that I present evidence of success, hopefully, in July of 2025, with all of you being able to complete an evaluation based on that in August of 2025. And then I would present new goals for next year in September of that year. Some of these goals have lighter-than-ideal specific metrics, but that said, they are aggressive, and I do believe they are measurable over the course of the next year, and that they will serve as a strong foundation for what I think can be even more meaningful goals and metrics for the year following. So with all that, are there any questions on that before I dive in, so that I can try to? Okay, superintendent goal number one. This is, I should also say that all except for one of these are probably also already fairly familiar to you as priorities for us and for me. So hopefully, none of it is, is surprising. But to revise or reaffirm bias-based bullying and sexual harassment and discrimination incident response capabilities. All of the below will have been either revised or reaffirmed by the superintendent, the district teams, and the advisory group or advisory groups that, that I will bring. All of these areas, the policies that the school committee will need to adopt, the procedures, which to me are the written promises of what steps we take when something happens and what kind of a timeline we follow within that. The initial training for any things that are updated, but also to reaffirm if things don't change for year-round staff, and plans for continued staff training for, for school year staff. Because i, if we revise procedures by June, realistically, we would need to just have a training plan in place for school year staff so that when they come back in late August, that would happen. Communication to stakeholders, meaning students, families, and staff members around what those policies are, what the procedures are, how to report things, and what to expect over the course of an incident response and a result or determination. Accountability measures, which to me means two things. One is an explicitly stated and used approach to sharing data with the public, as well as well-defined documentation for what is provided to parties at each point in time over the course of an investigation, so that if they are ever asked, whatever happened to, or did you ever get a response, or did you, how did that go? That they would have that stack of communications, and they would know what they were supposed to have received and whether or not they did. That, to me, is accountability. So evaluation metrics for success would be completing each of the above. So at the end of this school year, or at the end of what I'm saying, July, you would be able to know, did we update the policies? Do we have the written procedures in hand? Did training happen for year-round staff? Is it planned for school year staff? Let's get copies of all the communication pieces that exist and that are being shared with students, family, and staff around all of that that I, that I wrote. And what are the accountability measures that have been put in place? All of that can be gathered up as a package and presented and experienced by, by families and, and members of our community. So that is goal number one. It's tied to the district improvement plan, goal number four, and it's also directly in line with commitments that the school committee and the district have made with, with ARPA funds from the town of Williamstown and Williams College over the course of the last bunch of months. So that's goal number one. Julia, would you prefer that we, that I present each of the four goals in rapid fashion and then we talk? Or would you like to talk about each one?
It seems to make sense if people want to ask questions after each one.
Yeah, that.
And then a discussion at the end, in case there's anything, any themes across that should be touched on.
Mm-hmm.
Karen? Question on this one. So you mentioned the ARPA funds. So those are specifically to hire a consultant, right? And I'm wondering, have we made progress toward, toward that goal?
Yes. The, the RFP for the consultant, hopefully, will be going out very beginning of next week. Responses will be in, in early December, and then we will be able to select a consulting firm for that, for that professional development prior to the end of December, which is really when we, when we need and want to. So the work will then continue, or the work will initiate in January or February, carrying through towards the end of the school year.
Great. Thank you. My other question is, process one. So you did include the superintendent evaluation, the DESI document. So did you by any chance determine, like, the metrics by which, you know, each of these things should be evaluated, or has the whole process changed?
So what I have here tonight, the, the evaluation bullet at, at the end of, at the end of the list, that indicates the type of evidence that would be collected and how the judgment, how judgment would be made as far as whether or not that goal was achieved. That's how I've laid it out right now, but I could certainly convert that into more of a, more of a DESI grid style.
I think before we do an evaluation, it would be helpful to have the DESI grid style, only so that we're all evaluating, if we're using the DESI evaluation system, we should all be evaluating on the same things. But for tonight's purposes, this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. All right. Goal number two. Complete the Plan of Action for Increased Literacy Across All Grade Levels Within the District. So earlier, within the district improvement plan context, it talked about the, the district-wide team that have been assembled, consisting of the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, the Principals, the Director of Special Education, reading specialists, curriculum and grade-level leaders, specifically curriculum and grade-level leaders within the middle, middle school and the elementary school, and then other teaching staff. They've done a lot of learning over, over efforts both within and outside the district over the last year. We, we do need to go through a, a process of documenting the proposed improvements within our curricular offerings and the tiers of support that we offer. We need to provide justification for the resources that are needed in order to implement that. And we also need to work through the process of, of understanding fully how our current benchmarking, assessment, and evaluation tools work within that context, and/or the additional tools that we would need in order to monitor student success achievement. That will culminate in, in presenting a Plan of Action for Improving Our Literacy Instruction Pre-K Through 12. That Plan of Action to be presented this spring is the culminating document showing the, the work, the knowledge, and the results that came out of that almost two-year-long process. And so that plan is one that I would view as being a, a goal and successful adoption of it by the school committee. Questions on that? That is tied to the district improvement, district improvement plan goal 1.4. And it is a building block for being able to significantly improve student, student learning within that area in the coming years. Okay. Number three, leading the hiring process for the next permanent principal at Williamstown Elementary School through a collaborative and comprehensive process. The development of a hiring committee is something that I need to kick off very soon, that will consist of administrators, building staff, parents and guardians, more broad community members. That's, that's step one. Step two is, I would like to have as much of that committee as present as possible for listening sessions that we need to coordinate and schedule for this winter with families, staff, and, and school committee members. We want to make sure to, of course, conduct that search in a way that allows for broad reach, maximizes equity through the hiring process. There are a variety of professional organizations, similar to the way the school committee has utilized MASCE in the past for superintendent hiring. There are a variety of professional organizations that have detailed services for the hiring of administrators like principals. That's definitely something that, that will be within consideration. And then making sure that we hire a principal for the start of the 2025, 2026 school year with, as a permanent principal. So the successful completion of each of the steps that I just outlined, I'll be gathering evidence. You will certainly be, be hearing aplenty along the way as well. And it's, it really needs to be a goal for me, because it is, it is one of those high-level items that does not happen every year, and that is incredibly important. And being able to document that process and, and bring you through in that way is the right way to go about it. And being able to document that process and and bring you through in that way is the right way to go about it. Any questions on that? And then goal number four. Further develop two way communication between the district and our students, staff and the community. Communication and relationships and transparency and information and people knowing what to do, how to do it, why something happened, learning about all the wonderful things that happen within our district on a day to day basis. That's the professional practice goal that that I have in front of us. And and it is personal, but it's also very much a, a district wide need. And to me, it underpins everything that we do within the district. And I do believe that 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 we can do better and that that will have a positive impact on the district. So what I'm proposing is that I'd like to work, and this is one area where I would like to gain outside help as quickly as I can. Work with an outside consultant on the, on the implementation of improved communication approaches that that can be looking at at our website. It's looking at PR approaches. It's looking at a regular clip of communicating with our community. It's looking at the process that we use for knowing what to say, when to say it, why to say it. Part and parcel of that is improving our website's ability to educate and keep people informed. Continuing to improve our use of parent square as an update and a news tool that's that's integral within, within our lives. Increasing news to the community around positives. Because I, I don't think we, we spend enough time letting people know about the unified program. We don't spend enough time talking about all of the wonderful ways that that we are interacting within our community. But also the challenges, coming up with ways to be more proactive, more communicative when there are challenges within the district. Implementing a mechanism for regular check ins with students, staff and families. Surveys, polls, temperature checks, measuring senses of belonging, asking people how something went, sending out a quick poll, checking to see whether people prefer the color red or the color white. Things like that, gathering information, listening, as well as having and doing that at a regular clip, but also developing improved ways for people just to reach out saying, I have a question, I have a need. I want to let you know that I had a horrible day and I know that you care, so I, I want you to hear this. This is, there's a lot of stuff there and there are a lot of words like improve and 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 increase. And I know that those are not the most measurable things or that those are not measurable in and of themselves. So I did take all of that down into two things that that are yes or no. Did he succeed or not type questions? One is launching a superintendent's news website and social stream component within, within our world where I I put up at least one post per week. That's part one. And then part two is launching the check in tool with at least monthly usage by students, staff and families. That will probably be a third party tool rather than something that we already have within our sphere. But there are a number of them in existence. Panorama Education is one company that offers a system like that so that you can pretty quickly craft something so that you can get meaningful data back quickly. Coming up with a way to utilize that across all of our different groups, students, staff and families is important and it's something that I believe we can launch by the end of this cycle and begin to gain information at a regular clip that will help inform everything else that we do. So that's how I tried to make that as measurable as I could. So those are the four goals. They are a lot, but I also think they are important and they are things that I'm already doing and that already keep me up at night. So I might as well put them out there as as goals. Jose?
Thank you, Joe. And just speaking from the eye here, I, I am very grateful that you are serving our district and our communities in this way. I think, you know, what you've shared with us just now and throughout this meeting tonight, I think, really speaks to just how lucky we are, you know, to have you, have you service in this way. Just question on this goal, that first bullet point on the consulting or working with an outside consultant. Could you speak a bit more or explain a bit more on why you see this as a need? And and, you know, you have articulated here, this consultant will help with the implementation of improved communication approaches. That speaks to me that you or your team have a sense of what our challenges are with regards to communication or communication approaches. I don't know if you are in a place where you can share what you think or what your team thinks are our challenges as a district? And speak more concretely on, you know, the role this consultant will play.
The sense that I have earned over the last couple of years is that people don't know nearly enough about all of the work that we do, why we're doing it and why that's a force for good within their lives. That's, that's part one. Part two is many times conversations that I have with families or that I have with advisory groups, they, they go to the end of, oh, I didn't realize that. Or why, why isn't that written somewhere? Or I just found three different copies of that procedure. Which one is the actual one? Or I tried to load that, but I couldn't actually, or I tried to search for that, I couldn't find it. Or when is that thing happening again? Where does that, how do I sign up for that club? Those are all, you know, those are all challenges that everybody in the world faces with all kinds of things. But I do think that we within this school district can do better. And and I do think that 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 will help address in very direct and tangible ways, experiences that people have that either not as good as they could be or that don't lead to us being able to convince people of things that we need to be able to convince them of in order for us to do our jobs, in order for us to do our jobs happily and well. And when people talk about trust, whenever anybody within our worlds, whether you're a school committee member or or a district level administrator, hears something about trust, oftentimes it comes down to people not having had information at the moment so that they felt as though we were being as transparent. Or, you know, you made that decision and you did it quickly. And we say, well, no, we, we talked about it monthly for seven different school committee meetings. Like, those are all the things that I think we can address here. Could we do that? Could I do that? Could, do, do we have people internally who could do that work? Yes, but one, it's, it's not what we already do naturally every day right now. Two, there are people outside of this district that only focus on communications, PR, website development, tool usage. Like, there are people who focus on usability and asking the right questions and providing information concisely. Learning from them, working with them, both for me as an individual, but also I think with the team that we have within the district will pay dividends in ways that are multiples of 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 anything. So it's a long way of saying, we could do it in house. But I think that having an outside view here and having outside help would be hugely beneficial.
Forgive the thumbs up. I think I must have done something with my hands that.
I wasn't, I was actually agreeing with it. It was, it was great. I, I just love the little, yeah.
But no, appreciative. Thank you, Joe.
So aside from the hiring of the principal, would any of these be better as two year goals? It just does seem a lot to accomplish in nine months.
Let me kind of take us through. This goal is, is one that we are already working towards. And and I believe we have a, a good commitment to concrete movement and change. You know, I would say movement towards good, whether it's revising or reaffirming and better explaining and, you know, better teaching what we do. This, I feel like it's, it's going to happen prior to the end of June and we're best off having a, having a goal here of that sort. This could be a two year goal, but I also think, given the urgency that the team internally has been working with so far, and also the reality of us needing to start to put some stakes in the ground from a budget perspective so that we have an updated plan for how to, how to roll out improvements. I feel like this is one that also has enough urgency and also enough progress already so that it's, it's a realistic thing to do prior to the end of the school year. Hiring, we already, we already talked about that one. And then, and then number four, realistically, this is going to be a continuous, a continuous effort. And I think it's a multi year effort. That said, the the measurable goals that I put down at the bottom, I think are pretty, they are pretty reasonable. If I wanted perfect, perfect everything here, yeah, it would probably be a, an infinity year goal. But but there are some measurable things here that we can get done here this year. And I wouldn't be surprised if this, if if there's a goal that builds on this for next year too.
Joe, could you talk about how these goals impact the goals of other district members? Kind of following on to Carrie's point, if you were holding all of these, fully, that would be too much. But how do they cascade down through the district to inform other schools?
Yeah, so goal number one, I, I have a DEIB advisory group that I'm working with. There will be an outside consulting firm providing for really each of these bullet points here. Here are learned best practices that are already implemented in other districts. And here is the, here is the blueprint that we would propose you use. Within the policy world, MASC actually has, has done a pretty good job of of laying groundwork for us too. And really, in order to go through all of this, the, the principals are also going to be very much a part of, of every minute of this after we've done enough to start to form exactly what we're going to do and and how we're going to go about it. So this is, it's a, it's a district wide effort and there are plenty of other folks also, also helping. But I, I need to be the point, the point at the center.
And I guess, I mean, the question, I guess embedded in that question is how are these then also in the goals of the principals or of the people who are engaged in this?
As of right now, no. But I, I do think that, I mean, part of this tonight is also trying to make sure that things can, can waterfall from there and and we can start to say, well, now that the school committee has, has approved this, we're, we're really going to get moving on it in, in ways that perhaps are different from how we've, how we've done it in the past, done it before. Goal number two, so much of, of the weight is already being, has been carried by the director of curriculum and instruction, the principals, director of special education and the reading specialists. So they've been doing the legwork to learn, gather additional information and have foundational discussions around, well, why are we doing it this way? Look at what school district XYZ is doing. Let's, let's grab more information from them. They've gone through that process already and they're continuing to do it in terms of learning and gathering. The, the process now that, that I'm trying to, to make sure I, I put my feet into the fire with is really making sure that all of that learning then converts into a plan that comes to you that can be our roadmap for the efforts that the district is going to take in a very coherent, budget supported way to improve literacy instruction across all grade levels within the district for years to come. Number three. This one. There's going to be a hiring committee that will consist of people from across a lot of different groups within the district. But ultimately, it's an area where, where I know that I, I need to be at the center of, of each conversation, each decision. In terms of the professional organizations that that help with principal searches, NESDEC is one of them. There are a few others that that do it. So there are certainly organizations and folks who who do this every day and and who can lend a lot of help, especially within some of the more finer, finer grain points within the process. And then within four. This. Separate from the measurable goals, there are a wide variety of people. Ellie, who is, is still, she's, she's survived two and a bit hours of this school committee meeting. She is, she's integral to all of this and and she's carried a huge load with respect to parent square, with respect to to work that's already been going to really prepare the website for improvements and to, and to have solid efforts everywhere. So she and I will definitely be working closely on all of this. And and it's integral to what she's already thinking about and doing on a daily basis. But trying to give us more of a catalyst, more of, of a primer on exactly what to do next and how to go about it and and how to follow best practices. That's where we'll, we'll be utilizing outside resources that do this kind of thing every day and that, and that understand really what, what is possible for a school district of our size with the abilities that we have. So it's, it's a lot of good within the district coupled with outside horsepower too.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joe on goals? All right. Do we want to vote on those? Are we, do we feel prepared to vote on those tonight as a committee? If so, can I have a motion to approve the goals that Joe has just walked us through?
No moved.
Thank you, Curtis. Can I have a second?
I will.
No, a second.
Well, Christina will second that. Any other discussion on the goals?
Thanks for the work that you put into presenting those and putting them together.
Here are no other discussion. Let's move to a roll call vote. Bowen, aye?
Conry, aye.
Constancy, aye.
Open by an aye.
Reen, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Excellent. That passes and great to move that forward. Joe, you've got two more items on your update, on your report.
I, I am not going to talk about the 57 pages within the end of your report that was in your packet. You are welcome to ask any questions that that you have, but it's really just the summation of everything else that that happened over the course of last year. So unless there are any questions on it, then leave it, leave it as is. And then now the student-owned technology devices policy rollout update. I never imagined that I would be able to say all the positive things that, that I will tonight. The way that students have, have embraced it and so often actually come up and said, you know, I was kind of angry, or I was kind of, I wasn't really sure what the school year was going to be like, but now, I mean, I'm, I'm talking dozens of students within Mount Greylock, grade seven through 12, have walked up to me and, and said things like that, like, it's actually, it's actually okay. Or, I've actually enjoyed it. Don't tell my friends this. Or, you know, that said, you know, and, and, and I still trying to find wood to knock on because it's just gone, gone so well. Part of what's made it, made it successful is the simplicity of it. It, it doesn't have loopholes, it doesn't have ways to kind of, you know, it's, it isn't graded out in various ways. It, it doesn't have lots of complexities around systems. That has led, however, to questions around, what about this exception? Or what about this? Or can we do that? And there are a few things that I want to bring up that I think have been learning moments and that we might adapt over time depending, but, but not right now. And so I'll just list, list those out, just so that you have some of the negatives to go along with what I think is really an overwhelmingly positive situation for the district at the moment. But, oh, did I note that? And, and I don't know how many students at Mount Greylock are listening, but the number of times now that they're talking, playing cards, jumping rope during lunch now is, like, it all, it almost makes me cry just how different and positive that lunch environment is from what it, what it was.
So do you have any similar feedback from the elementary schools in terms of those kinds of things?
Well, the, the elementary schools, they, they didn't, mobile phone usage wasn't allowed at all already. But the principals have experienced less needs to note that a student pulled out their phone in the hallway between classes quickly. Which is, yeah, it's, that's also a positive. But the, but the real dramatic change has been within, within the middle high school. Yeah, so I, that's, okay, so challenges. Part of, part of it has been students at Mount Greylock. They, they take courses at local colleges. They, they do work where they want additional tools to be able to do that work faster or in different ways. Part of our mantra has been, and so they say, well, can I bring my MacBook? Can I, can I, can I have my MacBook for two hours during the day, but then put it away? And, and so those conversations, you know, we engage in to be able to gather information for a few different reasons. One is, it's just genuinely interesting to learn what the advantages are of the various pieces of hardware and software that they want to use are. We can learn whether or not there are things that, that we can and should make available for all students. Two is, we have conversations around equity, around if, if you're able to do this and your peer next to you is not, like, what challenges does that create for them? Is that fair? Let's talk about it. It doesn't mean that our solutions are going to be perfect, but they are very human and, and they are evolutionary. And then, and then three, being able to have the conversation around, so is this the type of technology that we should push for? For every student and why? Or should we think about adapting the material, what you're learning, what you're being asked to do so that it, so that it works in a different way, so that it works for you? All of those, so far, we've had a couple of situations where within very specific independent studies or places where students are off campus, we've adapted our rules so that, so that they, they can work. But ultimately, if, if you were to change what you do so that you welcome any student to utilize a MacBook if they have it during a specific hour of the day, one, it's not equitable, which is one, one conversation to have. And two, it does open up that all of a sudden they're on iMessage and Snapchat and other things going through there. And that creates anxiety and that creates moments where everybody else needs to try to figure out how to get around things and do things. So, so far, we've, we've been very, 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 very surgical about what we do and why we do it with respect to exceptions. That's part one. Part two of the conversations, student-owned devices that can communicate with, with others. The reality is that if you're, if you're wearing a pair of headphones walking around the school, those headphones, they can be connected to the phone that's sitting in your locker, and we would have a more difficult time realizing that. Or you could be hiding your phone in your backpack and have your headphones connected and doing things. So we've had to have stricter rules around no, no student-owned headphones. And, and that has definitely been an area where some students have come forward saying, well, we know that you're supplying earbuds now, but the earbuds aren't the kind of earbuds that I would want to use, or I don't really like them, they don't fit my ears perfectly. That's a continuing conversation, trying to figure out how do we, how do we best allow for that type of thing? But we do it in a way that does not compromise the core benefits of, of the policy and the implementation of the policy. Those are really the, those are the two areas. Special capabilities of some devices that students own where they really want to be able to use them. And the impact of not allowing people to utilize their own headphones, specifically when they're at Mount Greylock. But aside from that, I mean, I'm, I'm thrilled with how things have gone, and I think as are the administrators and the students. So it's been good. Any questions on it? So that, that's the end of the agenda items related to superintendent report. I'm sorry for going over the 30 minutes.
Well, all important information, all important conversation. The MASC Division VI report, Carrie, is that you?
Typically, it's me, but I actually wasn't able to make it to the conference this year, and there was a Division VI meeting at the conference. Julia, did you happen to attend?
I, I did, actually. So if that's what the report should be, the, I, it was a very poorly attended meeting. I think the conference being four hours away from here is a challenge for Berkshire County school committee members. The key conversation we had was that Division VI was the only division that didn't put forth a slate of officers for the various divisions across the state. And at present, I think that Carrie has agreed to continue to be the president of our division.
Yeah, someone else stepped up, you know?
Someone else stepped up there, and they weren't, they weren't going to be able to take nominations that day. So there's going to have to be the, apparently the board of MASC will be maybe appointing or voting based on if Division VI submits any, a slate of officers. But so if Carrie does it, we are fortunate. I think the other people who are there, we're going to be thinking about, is there anyone else in their district, in their school districts who would do it? But I think there also still needs to be a vice president and a secretary, treasurer appointed, or named. So that was the crux of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for your service there, Carrie. That's super helpful. I can give a quick conference update broader than that. So I was there last week, lots of really great sessions and really, really terrific networking with other, with other school committee members. So I just encourage, I haven't been before, I know Carrie's been. I think Christina's been, I don't know who all has gone. Just encourage you to think about getting there in the future, even if it's not for the whole time, but if it's just a day or two. There's a lot of really great sessions. I wanted to, in particular, update everybody on the resolutions because we discuss those at length about what the MASC is going to be lobbying for or, or asking the legislature to support. When we spoke last, there were, I think, 11 resolutions that were outlined. They, they all passed, some bearing degrees of, of conversation. And the amendment that this committee discussed and I put in was approved almost unanimously. So that they're saying, update the MCAS or change the MCAS, but just don't put a moratorium on them while you make the updates. So that passed almost unanimously. And then there were the old resolutions that were being brought back if we, if the group wanted to. Those actually ended up getting voted as a block, and they were approved as a block. So right now, I think the MASC has something like 20 different things they're trying to lobby for. Don't know how that works. So that's, that's my quick date. All right, upcoming meetings. Our next meeting is December 12th at 6:00 PM. We also have a policy and governance subcommittee meeting happening before then. So I'm not quite sure how we reallocate committees, but I will follow up with Christina offline on how that works. Because there's, I think, December.
Yeah, and Julie, I could, apologies for jumping in. Could consult with, with Joe about whether we want to hold that date for the subcommittee or whether that can wait until we have our reallocation meeting?
Yeah, great.
I'm happy either way.
Okay. I don't have any other items for discussion, not reasonably anticipated. Christina, I'm going to ask you, had you heard anything?
Nope.
Okay, excellent. And are there, oh, yes, Carrie.
Are we going to meet, sorry, are we going to need a finance subcommittee meeting before the next school committee meeting? Because I think the subcommittees continue as they are until we, so we could, and I don't expect changes to the finance subcommittee.
I don't, with, with Thanksgiving in the middle here, I'm trying to figure out how much I would actually be able to prepare.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if I would have something meaningful, whereas I do think that meeting maybe after the next school committee meeting, but before the end of December would make sense if we could.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we want to put something on the calendar now since people's schedules? So that would be like, well, I can't do it the 19th. All right, let's just do a poll or something, figure it out later.
Sounds good. I'll, I'll make sure that we get an email out just checking on availability for, for December.
Okay. Any agenda requests? Terrific. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's for a motion to adjourn.
No moved.
Curtis, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Carrie. All in favor, or Bo and I, roll call vote, Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Konstatin, I.
Elfen, bye, and I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I. Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Good job, Julia.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.